So do you have John Hensman's phone number?
I don't have his phone. Um, Caroline might.
No, I don't.
You don't?
Only you don't.
We'll give it another two minutes. And then, um... My understanding was that both John and...
Normal...
I might have... I didn't hear from... I didn't hear from, um...
Our publisher's?
Um, the commercial real estate... Wait, let's see, I already commercial. And something real estate. I think that's the trip that dropped away.
All right. Some people waiting.
Ask if you shall receive...
Someone's in here now.
You, I think you are.
Okay.
Not by name, but by the way it's being... So what does that tell you when I'm the only one who can be elected?
Right.
And when they're being asked by others to run. That's who. They can't... Johnny George can't buy it. Yeah.
All right, sir, you all set?
Yeah.
Uh, and Barrington, you've already indicated you're all set, Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, I'm going to call the March 19th, 2019 meeting of the zoning board, Rollinsburg Zoning Board of Appeals, um, uh, to, to order. And, um, the first order of business is for, um, our reporting secretary to read the role.
Uh, so present are Charles Putnam, Chair, uh, Baron Boss, John Hensman, Dean Rollo, and Andrew Cass. Also present for the town is Tom Farb, the Building Inspector.
All right. Uh, and our first order of business is a public hearing on the application of Mr. Casinelli. And my intention was to hold a whole hearing on the appeal and then do the whole hearing on the verdict. That's unacceptable to the parties.
Yeah, that's very great because one is granted enough to the...
Um, and so the reporting secretary, the first case, if you could, uh, read your report.
Uh, so it's case nineteen dash zero one, Maria Casinelli, doing business of Days Auto Salvage, issuing an appeal from an administrative decision in relation to section five point two, non-conforming use, and so just in point two, regulations of the Rollinsburg...
Hold the draw, I can't read.
...zoning ordinances, which determine that the applicant, the operating of business that is a non-conforming, non-conform, bothers to allow when used located at tax map two, lot nine, lot one sixty seven, fourth row.
And have you provided notice to the Butters?
All, uh, Butters have had notice. I'm just seeing, uh, to see facts that they got.
Okay, um, so just so the parties and the public knows how we'll proceed tonight, this is an appeal by Mr. Casinelli. He has, uh, the assistance of counsel and either Mr. Casinelli or Mr. Barrington are welcome to address the board. You'll have a chance to begin because it's your, uh, application. During your presentation, members of the board may ask questions of you. Uh, and when you're done, um, Mr. Clark will have a chance to address the board. And similarly, um, uh, members of the board may ask Mr. Clark questions. If you, if you want us to ask questions of Mr. Casinelli, let us know, um, either by writing it down on a piece of paper or letting us know and we can direct the question. And similarly, if you want us to direct questions to Mr. Clark, just, uh, ask the questions through us. After you each have had a chance to address the board, we'll see if, um, Butters or members of the general public, uh, want to either add facts or add comment to the, uh, to the application. So with that, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. I'm gonna begin with Mel Casinelli, um, describing the use of towing vehicles at this location, uh, to his knowledge. Tell us the history of having tow trucks there.
Okay, when I first purchased...
Name and address.
Um, Melo Casinelli, and I use one sixty-two Summersworth Road in Rollinsburg. When I first purchased this property, I, uh, owned a towing company. And the reason I purchased it was a place to park my tow trucks. And I came in and I spoke to Mr. Ed Jensen and Al Gayon, and they said it was okay to, uh, use tow trucks there because tow trucks are part of, uh, like a junkyard work hand-in-hand. Those five acres of industrial zone land. And, um, I've been there seventeen years and I'm still there today. It's established I've been helping people in this community for twenty-two years with AAA. I do Geico all state and all the other tow car. I tow for the police. I used to tow for Summersworth, but I still tow for Dover Police, Borough Police Call me, you know, all hours of the night. And we go and, you know, do accidents, arrests, and so forth. So the tow trucks are parked there. My tow truck drivers take the trucks home with them. So it's not like they're in and out twenty-four hours a day. Uh, so whoever's on duty, like the third shift guy, takes a truck home with him for the evening. So if we do get a police call, we bring it to my yard and we store it there until people come and claim it. And I also buy junk cars. So when we buy a junk car, we call it to the junkyard.
Well, how many trucks have you had, um, over seventeen years, tow trucks?
We have five to six registered at all time. And they're all registered to Rollinsburg. Every few years, I buy two new trucks and, you know, because by then they weren't out.
And did you rely upon the representations of, uh, Mr. Jensen and others in seventeen years of continued use that this was a permissible use?
Yes.
Was it important in your purchase of the property to be able to have your tow trucks there?
Yes, this place we were gonna park the tow trucks. That's where I store all my service on there, my garage.
And did Mr. Day have tow trucks prior to you purchasing the property?
Yes, when I bought the property, he had a tow truck that came with it. He had a front-end loader, a bulldozer.
I was gonna make comments, but are there questions directly from Mr. Casinelli based upon what he's talked to in terms of facts and history?
Okay. Mr. Boss, any questions for Mr. Casinelli?
None at this time. Sure. So how many, in terms of the, um, and Brian, if you think that this is a question I should ask, could feel free to jump in instead. On average, how many times per week does a Cast tow truck enter or leave the business property?
How many times per week?
Right.
Well, every day when they break shift, they'll jump in a truck and they'll go.
All right, but are you saying that when a driver, a tow truck driver leaves the property, he leaves the property for the entire day and doesn't return until the end of the shift?
Until we have to, uh, service the vehicle or if he brings the junk in.
And so how many entries and exits by the tow truck trucks occur on it per day or per week?
Yeah, I can't. I normally be guessing, so I don't know the exact amount.
Okay.
Now... Well, so you could say each truck once a day or each truck one and a half times a day?
Yeah, probably each truck, uh, I would say three times a day is fair. I mean, if the truck's sitting there, then it's sitting there. But they'll come in, they'll go. Like today, he did a tow to, um, hundred and twenty miles to Lime, New Hampshire. So he was gone five hours. He took off and then he came back and parked the truck.
So the trucks you have, how many of them have a driver on any given day?
I have, um, three drivers on during the day and then two at night.
Okay. When you, so you, you bought Days Auto Salvage in what year?
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one. And at that time, how many tow trucks did Days Auto Salvage, how many tow trucks did they have, were they operating?
They said they had one and I had two. So we had three total when I first got there.
When you say two, are you saying that your business was operating there in two thousand and one?
I had two Cast towing trucks, yes. And then when I purchased that property, then I moved my trucks there.
And so it went from one of Mr. Days and two of yours to how many today are there?
Yeah, five.
Five, um, five were all operational there?
Yeah.
Okay. And so...
One of them just sits there all the time. It's a racket we barely use.
Sure.
So four of them are running a lot.
Is, is Cast Towing a separate business from Days Auto Salvage or is it the same business now?
Separate.
What's that?
Separate right now.
Separate, okay. How many...
You do a single tax return for both?
Yes, one for both, yeah.
It's separate.
How many, uh, employees does Cast Towing have versus Days Auto Salvage?
They're all the same employees.
There were, and so how, of the, of your employees and how many total employees do you have?
Uh, right now, six.
Six. Of the six total employees, how many are involved on a daily basis doing towing? And how much are involved on a daily basis doing the salvage?
Yeah. I have one that does the salvage yard and he's my mechanic. He fixes my trucks.
Okay.
And the rest of them are tow trucks.
Okay.
And he also fixes your tow truck.
Yeah. Yeah, he's my mechanic.
So it's fair to say that, or is it fair to say that Cast Towing makes up the lion's share of the profits of the two businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
I advertise on my business cards, Cast Towing, invite junk cars.
Okay, I'd prefer the questions right now, but thank you.
Can I ask a little question?
Okay.
Um, I do have a couple of questions, um, Mr. Casinelli. So can you just, I just wanna clarify. So when you purchased the business, Mr. Day had one tow truck.
Yes.
And then you acquired the business. He left with that one tow truck and you brought two tow trucks onto the property.
Yeah.
So, I mean, did you say you had, you were operating there before you actually bought the business?
No.
That, yeah, that's what I wanted clarification because that was what was alluded to. So it was completely separate. You purchased it...
Yeah, moved in and...
And, okay, so it went from one tow truck to two tow trucks. Are you aware, so when you purchased the, the junkyard, was the towing just in relation to junk cars? Was he also doing towing for AAA, Geico?
No, no.
It was just in relation to junk cars?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that's all I have for right now.
I had just a couple of questions, which is famous last words. Mr. Casinelli, there, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're saying that there are no entrances and exits from the yard at night?
Yeah, there is, there are very few.
Okay.
But, but the driver comes in at six o'clock, he takes the truck and he goes. There's no reason to hang around there. It's closed. There's nothing going on. The only time they come back is to bring the car in. It was in an accident, police call, or snow removal, and they have the parking vans. Then they're in and out, towing cars in or releasing a car if somebody wants to pick up their car after hours.
And I, it's always hard to, I, you know, estimate these things. Do you have an estimate of how many cars are in the yard at this point?
Right now, it's about fifty to sixty cars.
And I'm sorry, I don't know more about how your business works, but, um, can you tell me a little bit about how the salvage business works? The car comes in and...
Yeah, car comes in, we buy, uh, we, we buy it, advertise it for sale. Nobody buys it for parts or as a whole car. Then, uh, we bring it to Borough and we calculate.
And I, do you, um, inventory parts there or sell parts?
No, whatever's on the cart is the parts. Once the cart's gone, then the parts are gone.
And there's also an auto repair business there or...
No, we just repair all the vehicles.
Okay. And the towing service is, so if, if a car is in an accident, it might come to your yard because it was towed there if it was totaled?
Yeah.
And it might come there if it was a snow day and a car was parked in a place where it's towing during snow days?
Yeah.
Um, or if a driver was, um, stopped for DWI, they, they, they might have to take, not be able to drive their car home, so that might come to the lot for that?
Yes.
All right. And I had a question. You have a license that was granted by the town in two thousand and three, correct? A license for the motor vehicle junkyard?
Yeah, we've got one there every year.
Yep.
This is the only year they haven't renewed it yet.
Okay. So it's, um, I think, Mr. Barrington, you provided us the copy of the, um, license that had conditions that was from two thousand and three? And it's the same conditions that exist up to the present?
That was a year they imposed conditions and most of the conditions are in place. I understand.
Um, and so, um, one of the conditions is a six-foot fence and that's there, Mr. Casinelli?
Yeah.
Um, and, um, one of the conditions is hours of operation eight to five P M., Monday through Saturday?
Yes.
And the area outside of the fence, and I, I think of it as the front yard, the, the area between the fence and the road, um, it, it looks like it's permitted for, uh, the offer of vehicles for sale. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, it also provides that that area be grassed in and maintained in an attractive manner, um, in gravel and so forth. That's part of the conditions?
Yeah.
Um, I think those are my questions. Thank you very much.
I have a follow-up by one that was asked.
Sure, yep. Uh, we'll let you follow up and then, Mr. Cass, go ahead.
Get your lead first.
I just have one additional, um, question, Mr. Casinelli. Is your towing business, is it, do you advertise that you're twenty-four seven?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So you said Mr. Day had tow trucks. Did he also tow from snows and parks and things like that? And he brought his vehicles to the yard with the tow truck?
Yeah, he used to tow for some of the apartments, like Cherry Field and, um, then other one over the railroad tracks, you know, some sort of...
So he didn't have a AAA dealership?
No.
But he was a tow truck bringing in cars all the time with his vehicle?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Boss's question.
I'll, I recognize Mr. Barrington.
That's my question.
Okay. Go ahead, go first.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Casinelli, you said your junk, your junkyard permit was not approved for nineteen, twenty nineteen?
For, um, I believe twenty eighteen.
Last year?
Yeah, I applied for it, um, for the year because, uh, they were waiting. Actually, I put it on this one over here. See, they, approval was delayed due to concerns raised by the Department of Environmental Services. But then the town received communication from D E S that the violations raised have been corrected.
When was that? If you don't mind.
That was, uh, the end of last summer.
Somewhere of eighteen?
Yeah, he, he...
Oh, this says November fifth, two thousand and eighteen minutes.
Oh, that's when they had here, the, the, here and here.
All right, so you reapplied for nineteen, correct?
Yeah, in March.
Okay. And?
And then, uh, I forget his name from, um, can't remember his name right now. But the, uh, the man from the Department of Environmental Services, he came in, did an inspection, and there was like a couple of bolts there. And, um, he just asked me to clean up a few things and he gave me tow after the smell of it with the other May. So the other May, everything was cleaned up. I got a dumpster, filled it up.
May hasn't come yet, sir.
The last May.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Don't, don't let Mr. Casinelli finish, Mr. Boss.
So I applied last, last year, March, and the town didn't give me the okay yet because they were waiting for the approval from, uh...
That's who was there?
From the D E S. It was D E S, uh, it was everything's been corrected. And he said something, then Mr. Clark, he got an email, right? And we were all upset with them and the town still didn't give me my license.
Okay, and as of present, twenty nineteen, you haven't received anything?
Right, that's correct.
Have you been denied or no, no communication or what?
I don't know. I asked, I don't know why they had it.
So, did you apply for one for twenty nineteen?
No, not yet. It's due like in March. It's that be March.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
He does have a license.
The location of the property is critical to note in that, um, immediately next door is a heavy truck repair center with at least, um, ten trucks outside, box trucks. The zone, as I pointed out in the application, is an industrial use. You know, the Supreme Court, when they look at table of uses, no town can ever list every single exact use, but the uses are really by categories. If you have a manufacturer of, of a high-tech material, you don't have to have, um, a permitted use that puts particularly names the high-tech material, like, um, they tend to be generic names. And the generic name that's there is a, is what's permitted is heavy truck repair, which is done next door, and a, um, trucking terminal. Now, um, Code Officer Clark is gonna present to you, apparently, the National Association of Industrial Office Properties for the purpose of commercial real estate listings, um, defining this as a specialized distribution building for the redistribution of goods from one truck to another truck. I'd suggest that that's a highly specialized, um, definition that may be adopted by the commercial realtors, but the standard that you have to apply is the plain meaning that's apparent to, to the public by the plain use of words. And, um, the plain meaning in Webster's Dictionary and any other dictionary would say that a truck terminal is a place where trucks come, they park, they're dispatched, um, they pick up loads or drop off loads, tran, which is a transfer, and go somewhere else. There's no question, even using this definition being presented by Code Officer Clark, is a staging area. While the goods and materials being transported are junk cars and cars that are not operated and cars that are being, um, um, removed according to police officers. That's what happens. I mean, there's no question that a tow truck is a truck. There's no question that the office inside is the dispatch center and the mechanic center and is a terminal. And more importantly, for seventeen years, the officials in the town of Rollinsburg have recognized that running the tow trucks in and out, um, falls within their table of uses for truck repair. You have the mechanic who's in the back repairing the tow trucks. And you have, um, a truck terminal being a staging area of trucks coming in and going out. You know, if we, I understand that maybe all of you are also the selectmen of the town or the selectmen acting as the board of adjustment or some are or some aren't. If you wanna change, no, so you're a selectman. So if the, if the selectmen wanna pass a new table of uses and wanna specifically deny this or make it broader or whatever, you know, that's what they could do, um, under the legislative prerogative. And of course, if they change the use now and you decide that it's a truck terminal, then, then it would then become a non-conforming use and there couldn't be any unreasonable expansion. So that really is just plain, ordinary sense, plain, ordinary understanding of meaning. That is what's going on there and it's a permitted use. Now, you've got some side issues which need to be kept separate. One, my understanding is that the last junkyard permit, according to the minute, is specifically denied because of the, because of the, quote, "Mr. Rollo explained the junkyard grandfather that there were concern about the towing service." So there's concern about the towing services what caused the delay in November of two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Cast went out, um, was working, he got some deadlines. We're a little bit later than the deadline imposed, but let's face it, December with Christmas and vacations and everything else tends to be kind of a dead month to get things done. And so this appeal being filed is to satisfy that section of it. We're not here necessarily to rule on the junkyard permit. We're just here to rule upon whether or not, um, the towing is a separate use from which a variance is required. Now, it is a separate use which would bring it under site review. Now, site review apparently hasn't been done through the planning board. And it seems to be a strong recommendation of, by, uh, Code Officer Clark that this does go to the planning board, it does go through site review, and then some issues can be addressed, um, as to whether they should park, whether instead of having gravel, which in a good March and April in New Hampshire, it's mud, and then I'm sure you all drove past there, right now it's a mess. But that's really up for site review to figure out. And once the uses can be approved or disapproved by this board, then it goes on to the planning board, then it goes back to the selectmen for the approval of the junkyard permit. But everybody agrees that you first have to decide, you know, the uses and then you go on to the other thing.
Okay.
If, I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
That's grounds number one. Grounds number one is that it is clearly permitted within a reasonable definition of a truck terminal by ordinance and by application. Number two is, is that it's a grandfather use. Now, we all know that a grandfather use cannot be unreasonably, cannot be expanded, um, but it doesn't mean there isn't any change or nature of a grandfather use. Now, Mr. Day did have, um, one, um, tow truck and he was going out and towing all the time. So the, the towing was already there. Seventeen years later, the testimony today is that, um, there's three trucks that are active. So maybe one truck has gone to three trucks, but he also had a front-end loader that he moved trucks around with. So I submit that over seventeen years, going from one truck and a front-end loader to three trucks operational, five trucks are there, but usually they're off, is really not a significant expansion of a non-conforming use. I mean, it's a pretty big property. There's a truck repair center next door. There's lots of screening and stuff, uh, between them and the next-door neighbors. There's no question that he has to abide by the hours of operation that are pursuant to the junkyard. And, but, the junkyard really is, the reason junkyards that have hours of operations is that junkyards have a lot of, you know, they, they, they take parts off. The easiest way to take a part off is to bang the nut off rather than saw it off and you saw it. So there's noise attributed to a junkyard operation when you start taking the parts out of the car. When you take parts off of the junk, you don't do it daintily. But having a, a tow truck come in and out occasionally doesn't seem to be a violation of the junkyard permit and actually wasn't part of the junkyard. So we feel that the, uh, you know, the presence and operation of tow trucks prior made it a, a present non-conforming, um, use that has existed prior to the enactment of, of zoning as this, this junkyard, as far as we can see, goes all the way back to the fifties and all the way back before your zoning ordinance. And during all that time... And during all that time, you know, there was one tow truck, maybe another tow truck coming in and out of there, which make it a grandfathered use. That's our presentation.
All right, thank you, Attorney Barrington. So I'm gonna, I think, have another round of questions from the board and impose on Mr. Clark's patience. Mr. Foss?
I'll start right now, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Henson?
You aren't asking that the variance be granted on the basis of conversations that your client had with the town of Rollinsburg years ago, right? Because I didn't see that in the application for the variance. And I'm questioning whether that could be raised if it wasn't put in there.
Not for the variance, but... I mean, I think there is some collateral estoppel involved in... Which is part of our presentation today.
But I'm saying you haven't put that in.
It wasn't specifically in our written materials. I didn't focus in on that. But to the extent that we put in the testimony and what he has, and I think the fact of estoppels... I mean, estoppel is a legal... And, you know, I think it certainly does apply. I would amend my request at this point to incorporate the evidence presented that he did have express permission to have towing.
What's the difference between a truck terminal and towing business?
You have to look at the use of the property. Everything in zoning has to do with use of the property. And in our opinion, as I say, if your trucks come, they park, they're dispatched, they're repaired, and they go again. And they carry goods, which in this case is... It's just a different type of truck. I mean, you could have a truck terminal of car transports. Or you could have a truck terminal if it's a Ford or Toyota, where they take cars out, and they put cars back on again, and take them to other people. I mean, I think truck terminal has to be given its broad definition.
So you think it's synonymous, truck terminal and towing business is synonymous? They mean the same thing?
You see, you're asking the towing business. What the vehicles do somewhere else is really irrelevant.
Okay.
What's relevant is what happens on this property. What's the use on the property, and how it affects the neighbors?
I did look at Webster's Dictionary, and I didn't... It doesn't typically define truck terminals, I could find. It defines terminal, and terminal usually means the first part of definitions are end-of-life. And the other subsidiary definitions are either end of a carrier line having facilities for the handling of freight and passengers. And the next definition is a freight or passenger station that is central to a considerable area or serves as a junction at any point with the lines. All right, thank you.
Mr. Rollo?
Just guess? I have a couple of questions. And I'm not sure if Mr. Barrington or Mr. Cassinelli, you want to answer these. So you're requesting a variance.
No, we're requesting an appeal of administrative decision. We're not doing a variance right now.
Okay, so, and that is to deny the use of Cass towing. So my understanding is it's your opinion that it's a non-conforming use from the original purchase of Day's Auto, correct?
That's the alternative theory. Our first argument is that it's a conforming use because it's specifically allowed by your zoning ordinance in terms of truck repair and truck terminals.
Okay, but in your application, you reference non-conforming use of the zoning ordinance, Section 5.2, correct?
Yes, and I also... Yes, that's the second argument.
Okay. So from the testimony that we've had, heard... So Mr. Cassinelli first purchased the property, and you had two tow trucks. Since that time, you've increased your business. You now have five to six tow trucks, correct?
Five.
Okay, five tow trucks now. So my reading from the definition of the license that was granted, which we've been provided, the most recent was from 2002, that it does limit your hours of operation between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And you have indicated that you are a 24/7 towing operation, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you did expand on that use since you acquired the property?
I was always a 24-hour towing company. The phone rings, and I call my driver, and he'll go out and pull.
Okay, but presuming so the license...
The junkyard license, yeah.
Okay. So are you saying that this junkyard license doesn't have bearing on your towing operation?
Yes, because it's a permitted use.
So it's one in the same?
It's not.
So these conditions... So these conditions that you've submitted, you're saying have nothing to do with Cass towing?
They don't... They have nothing to do with Cass towing except to the extent that they're operating the junkyard. To the extent that they're... I mean... Correct. Has nothing to do with the junkyard.
Okay. So I think I'll hold the rest of my questions until we go further.
Mr. Clark?
By the way, can I just jot in, but it does say he is subject to internal renewal process for his junkyard permit, and no objection has been made to tow trucks. So it was planned, if you will.
Okay, I'm sorry, I read through quickly, that's why I asked... Well, okay. I guess I didn't see the conversations with...
No, I didn't know that. That's evidence.
I have to ask you another question, Attorney Barrington, based on your response. I thought one of your arguments tonight, you're saying the salvage yard and the towing are separate, and have nothing to do with one another. And I thought part of your arguments are that one is incidental to the other.
Again, there's argument one, and there's argument two. Argument one is that it's a permitted use. If you find that it's a permitted use, that it's not subject to the hours set forth for the junkyard. If you find that the towing business is... You know, it's not as much... I mean, really... The third argument, if you will, is that it's ancillary, and that it's part of the junkyard business, you know, but...
And if we did find it was ancillary, is it then to be limited to the junkyard hours?
Yes.
Mr. Clark, thanks for your patience.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with Mr. Barrington's assessment on the table of use regulations that towns certainly or all municipalities can list and describe every single use that's available. However, Rollinsburg, as in most municipalities, has a permissive ordinance, which is to say it says what is allowed, not what is not allowed. So it's to an applicant's responsibility to prove that what his use is fits within one of the allowable table of... One of the allowable uses listed in the regulations. In this particular case, I handed out the definition from the commercial real estate company. I also looked up, and all the simplified ones I have are the same as the ones that you discovered, that it's basically a terminal used for loading or unloading of freight. In this case, and... Let's go back and up. The discussion about the accessory use, I also left on your table... These are from the New Hampshire Secretary of State's office. They clearly show these are two separate, standalone, independent principal businesses. One is not accessory to the other. The order that I pointed out, it would have to be incidental and subordinate to the principal use, which it certainly is not. So I don't think that Mr. Cassinelli's description of the towing fits either of descriptions, or any description that we can find of trucking terminal. So then we decide we have to establish what it is. And it is a separate, standalone towing use that does operate 24/7, that has not been in use for the whole time of Mr. Day's ownership. It did start and blossom under Mr. Cassinelli's ownership. Part of the issue with licensing is that that connection was finally made. No question that the town has issued permits for the operation of the junkyard for as many years as Mr. Cassinelli has owned it. And there never has been an issue until, I believe it was Mr. Watson, Don Watson from DES, was the individual that brought to our attention some potential violations of state regulations of Mr. Cassinelli's operation from the storage yard, not the towing, but from the storage yard. So we went over, did a site visit, took pictures. Mr. Cassinelli described, there were issues that had been corrected. But during the course of that investigation, that's when it came to mind, or I should say came to light, that the towing operation had increased dramatically during the years that the junkyard had been licensed. And shame on us for missing it for so many years, but it was brought up. We had to address it. One of the reasons was the... Were the hours of operation, as you pointed out, I mean, it was going to be accessory to that. It had been limited to eight to five, which clearly isn't. During the hearing that Mr. Barrington mentioned, we had testimony from a butters that... Basically, that there were operations pretty much all hours, I mean, three and four in the morning. And that was corroborated by Police Chief Dushar, who brought in a number of incident reports of what his officers had responded to at Mr. Cassinelli's office location. So those things all kind of snowballed, and pretty much brought us to where we are now, today. We have made a determination, we being... You know, I did bring this to the attention of the select board. They did agree, which was the basis for my letter, that they are... We feel they are two separate businesses. And it is nigh-grandfathered in that it was never allowed in the first place as operated today. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I'm gonna start at the other end of the table, go this way this time, use Cass.
So, Mr. Clark, when all of this additional evidence came forward, was this at the planning board hearing? When did this all come forth, the police reports, the butters, or the neighbors complaining? When did all this come out?
It was a special public hearing held by the select board for that specific purpose.
And when was this held? Do you recall?
November of '18, I think.
Of what year?
Eighteen.
November 5th, 2018, sixteen.
I have the date.
And I was on the junkyard application.
Correct, but it came forward that this Cass towing was a much larger scale operation than just one tow truck towing junk cars to the junkyard?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Henson?
Mr. Clark, what weight should the board give, in your opinion, if you have an opinion, as to Mr. Cassinelli's arguments that essentially the town gave him an okay on the towing business years ago when he relied on that?
I can understand the reason that he's stating that, and I can't speak for Mr. Jansen nor Mr. Deon, of course. But it may have been they weren't aware, as we weren't aware, of the extent of the use of a towing operation. And as far as I can remember, the permits that have been issued didn't mention a separate towing operation. So when Mr. Cassinelli spoke to Mr. Jansen and Mr. Deon, I'm just presuming that they are describing it saying that it was allowed as it has been used without knowledge of the towing.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Foss?
Yeah, I got a bunch of them. Let me try to figure out. I want to lay them out here. I'm really familiar with the junkyard. I've lived here for forty-some odd years, so I knew Chicky Day, right? Well aware of the junkyard. His business is within the industrial area. Look, it's been deemed as a trucking terminal, for lack of a better term.
I think you'll find that there is a definition... I mean, there's a use listed as a auto junkyard.
No, no, I'm talking the towing company.
Oh, oh, okay.
I mean, to me, the junkyard is over here. Look, the whole issue is Cass towing, is it not? Or am I misreading this more?
I think the issue at hand is Mr. Cassinelli's argument that Cass towing should be allowed to continue as an adjunct to...
Let him finish, Mr. Foss.
Junkyard, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I believe that the argument is that they should be considered together. They should be considered as one, so that the license issued by the town also covers the towing. It's minding that it does not, that it's a separate standalone business. And hence the supplement, I mean, the following application to the variance. If this appeal is denied, then a petition is only going for variance to operate a towing service in that industrial zoning business.
Why would he need to do that where it's... Actually, if it falls underneath the trucking terminal? Or I just... You know, I've read this, and I could go here, and I read it, and I could go here, and then I could be anyplace, because there's nothing cut and dry here.
There isn't. I agree, and that I think is part of the problem. At this point, I'm disagreeing with the definition of trucking terminal as applied to towing service. I don't see that it fits the definition.
I could understand that, but in the same token, you may look at one where you'd be afraid. Now, C&amp;J Bus Company goes to terminals, and they pick up people. There's no freight. I mean, there's other towing companies within the town of Rollinsburg.
Who would that be, Mr. Foss?
Let's let Mr. Foss ask his questions, and let Mr. Clark respond to his questions. We'll have an opportunity to deliberate after the hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Foss. Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, sir. I agree, but I don't think there's separate towing services. I think they are accessory to, like Paul's Integrity Auto, or Joe's Auto, or...
I agree.
Yeah, they don't do it 24/7, AAA-approved.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foss. Mr. Clark, I'm struggling with a couple of things. One is, is the town's position that Mr. Cassinelli can't have a tow truck to operate his salvage business?
It's the town's position that if this appeal is denied, then it is not a permitted use, and not that he cannot do it, but he cannot do it without the appropriate permission, as Mr. Barrington outlined, from the zoning board of adjustment, and then site review in front of the planning board, and then the license issued by the select board.
Oh, okay. I thought it was going to be a different answer. I thought the answer was that he could have a tow truck for his tow business, but he could only use it between certain hours and...
Oh, my apologies. Yes. If he had a tow truck that was operating just for Day's Auto salaries, during only those hours, it would be similar to the other tow trucks that we discussed. And it's clearly accessory to that use.
And then it's the expansion that you believe is a kind of... It's not a permitted use because it's... You believe it's different in nature and kind than the salvage business?
Yes, sir. It's a separate principal business.
And I'll give Mr. Barrington a chance to answer this question as well, but I'm fairly new to the zoning board chair position, and this is my first zoning board appeal of an administrative decision. And I'm a little confused. It looks to me, from what I've read, that we pretty much defer to your reading of the ordinance. Like, if we think that you read the ordinance wrong, we have to have a pretty good reason to disagree with you?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we look at the face of the language of the ordinance.
Yes, they... Appeal administrative decisions don't happen with a regular basis. I mean, I was zoning administrator, building official, over for over thirty years, and there may have been six or eight. It doesn't happen on a regular basis at all.
So it's... So it's... I'm trying to get my... Get the concept. And again, Mr. Barrington, I'll give you a chance to address the question. But it sounds to me like, even if we disagreed with you, if we believe... with you, if we believe that you are making a reasonable reading of the ordinance as it's printed, that we defer to the administrative people, is that...
Yes, sir. That would be my interpretation.
All right, and I think, Mr. Barrington, I'll come, definitely give you a chance to address that question. And then, I asked this question of Mr. Barrington as well, but it sounded to me that Mr. Castelli does not object to going to site plan review for the towing business.
I don't think he does object to it, okay.
So it's not a claim that the towing business is grandfathered and exempt from site plan review, it's just, the question is whether that use is permitted on the site?
I think it is more of a question of whether that use is grandfathered, in which case he wouldn't need to go to site review, because it would be a permitted use.
Oh, okay. So he is claiming exemption from site plan review?
I believe so.
Okay. Mr. Barrington, before I open it to public comment, I want to give you a chance to respond to those two questions. And also, if there are any questions you want us to put there, Mr. Clark, let us know.
The question of Mr. Clark is, because I understand you want to go through the chair, is probably following up exactly what you said. As a truck terminal where he's parked tow trucks, he didn't need a special permit for that purpose. It's not like a junkyard, it doesn't require a permit. Correct?
If it was a trucking terminal and the town agreed to that definition, there never was a trucking terminal at that site, so Mr. Castelli would still have to proceed to the zoning, I mean, excuse me, to the planning board for site review of that particular use.
And I believe, I don't mean to jump in, Mr. Barrington, but I believe it's Section 8.22.1 requires site plan review for all commercial and industrial uses permitted. So if it's a permitted use, I think it requires site plan review.
Yes, sir.
And that's never been required.
Hasn't up to this point?
And the buildings, the buildings on the property which require a building permit is a garage where the repairs are done. That allows, this entire site is just blank ground upon which a truck is parked. It's no improvements, you don't actually need a permit for a parking lot, you don't have to go through site plan for a parking lot. It already has an office, the office is a permitted use for dispatch. So the use of this property is to park a truck.
So the question is, the use that you're seeking, seeking to argue is an accessory to the salvage yard, or is it permitted?
It's all free. You know, to the first extent, it's, as I laid out the different things, it's permitted use, because it's within the common sense understanding of a truck terminal. Trucks can carry many things, and these trucks carry cars, and it's always been there. If it's, to the extent that the new use is recognized as being permitted, then the town can say, well, then this should have gone to planning board, because as you pointed out, every commercial use is subject to site review regulation. So he has specifically stated, and he is willing to submit the site review regulation if they want to have concerns about where the trucks are. Look, the other thing you have to understand is, there's an impound lot which takes up almost a quarter of the parked areas. So those are cars that are coming in, being parked within the perimeter of the junkyard and stored, which is basically what a junkyard, all junkyards do. Roger's Auto Body does towing 24/7. Rollinsford Police, I don't know whether the Auto Body shop has required hours of operation, but to the extent that he's, you know, he's running that. So if you find that his actual use of the property is a functional equivalent of a truck terminal, and you only have, like, seven authorized uses listed, then I would have to go to the planning board and he agrees.
So he agrees that it would go to site plan review?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Are there other questions for Mr. Clark from the board before I open it for public comment?
Yeah, I have one.
Mr. Foss?
Sorry, Tom.
No, sir.
Clarification. If I'm wrong, just please tell me I'm wrong, because I think I'm heading down the right It's a, they feel that the towing business, cast towing, is grandfathered under the junkyard setting, or do they feel that cast towing is completely separate from the junkyard?
I think that would be a better answer by them, but in my opinion, I think they think it's grandfathered under the day's auto salvage.
Okay. All right. I think I got a much better handle on all of this. I hope you guys had it better than me.
All right.
What I'm gonna say is, there are alternative theories. It's permitted use, it's an ancillary use, it's grandfathered use, and it hasn't really substantially changed from all these years.
I do have another question.
All right, we'll keep the public waiting just a minute longer, Mr. Cass, go ahead.
So, Mr. Clark, again, so you spoke to us about that the expanded use of cast towing just came to light of the Select Board and the town of Rollinsford in late 2018, when there were additional police calls, neighbor complaints.
I believe we discussed it in November of eighteen, but it happened earlier that year when we were doing the site review with Mr. Watson from DES. So it was...
Within a year?
It started, yes.
Okay, so it hasn't been prolonged? It's only been within the last year, fourteen months, that the town of Rollinsford has become aware that cast towing isn't just one or two tow trucks, it's an actual full-fledged business?
That's correct.
Okay.
And also, if I may, once again, it is a separate business as established by the Secretary of State.
Correct. And, Mr. Barrington, I just want to clarify, so Roger's Auto Body, you said, does towing for the Rollinsford Police Department? And my understanding that Roger's Auto Body is in Summersworth, not in Rollinsford, that they no longer do business out of the Rollinsford location, so it's a, I believe it's a completely different municipality that they do business out of.
They were in Rollinsford, when did they move out?
I don't think it's been in operation for quite some time. I believe it's in Summersworth now.
Yeah. He's still, as I know, he's still with Rollinsford, also he had two locations.
He doesn't, I don't believe so.
Can I treat that as a...
Yeah, I just wanted clarification, okay.
Yeah, I knew he was still here in Rollinsford, and the sun or something was in Summersworth.
Yeah, the sun has the primary, that's where... Okay, thank you. I'm good.
All right. Members of the public, there are at least two things that you can do. One is to provide additional facts for the board to consider on the appeal, and whether or not the board should affirm, reject, or modify the letter, the cease and desist letter that Mr. Clark sent. And you can also, if you have an opinion about the board, you're welcome to share that. I would request that you direct your comments to me, and that you state, so we get a clear record, your name and address, so that our long-suffering recording secretary can get home before midnight. So, questions or comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Hi, Jim Argu, I am 144 Summersworth Road, a butter on the northern edge of the property. I've lived there for thirty-six years, so I got to watch Chicky Day in the sun quite well.
I'm so sorry. Can you tell me your first name again and your address?
Jim Argu, A-R-G-U, 144 Summersworth.
Okay, thank you.
It is a complete stretch to say what Chicky was doing, because I lived next to him for eighteen years when he was running the business, is nothing in comparison to what they're doing today. If you go from one tow truck to six tow trucks, that's a 600% increase. They're running all the time, and they're annoying. So, advice from me to you is that you should play hardball here. This is not a business that is playing by the rules, and they haven't for a long time. I recently had my well water sampled for the second time by the state because of contamination emanating from the junkyard. The, Mr. Castelli, back in the day, was filling property, and he filled in wetlands on his property and my property, which I reported to the state, and he was ordered to remediate. My next-door neighbor, Mr. Arkwell, has raised comments with the concerns with the use of the compliance with the permit. And there's many instances where they're not in compliance and haven't been, and they comply when they're forced. This is not a business that makes a good neighbor. We have a tow truck driver at two in the morning that decides to do donuts in the middle of the road and through the lawn of the junkyard. I go out the next morning, I find it's also on my property, which I consider trespassing. There, this is a unique neighborhood. There's houses and businesses, about one for one. So if you're gonna run a business in this neighborhood, granted it's owned industrial, and I think that's something we need to refine a little bit, you would need a business that operates in a manner that the neighbors feel good about. Many of the businesses are owned by homeowners, and they perform at a high level. I point to Wetworth Oil Recycling Business out back, looks to be a spectacular business, well-run, well-standard, I don't have any complaints with it. These guys look more like a criminal network to me. I think you should throw them out of the town permanently.
This is Paul Casel, Heritage Drive. I'm against the approval of the cast towing business request. Both businesses will expand land uses that handle hazardous materials and pose a huge risk to the water quality of the Warren Brook and Fresh Creek watershed and aquifer. The aquifer is used by approximately fifty homes on the Rollinsford Road, Moses Carr, Heritage Drive neighborhoods, along with Summersworth Road. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to give the board three documents.
Mr. Casel, do you, I hate to put this burden on you, did you happen to make copies that can be shared with Mr. Barrington and Mr. Clark?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I didn't realize, oh, there's a lot of P. Mullins somewhere...
Not a worry. What we'll do is, I'll share my copy with...
I'll relinquish mine as well.
Okay.
This has to do with water quality, it has nothing to do with this application.
This is public comment, and, Mr. Barrington, my intentions, and the board can certainly take up relevance if you want to address that in your response. Would you like them? Mr. Casel, go ahead.
Yes, the first letter is dated November 2nd, which is from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. It says, "Subject: Gasoline-related test of the water supply well at my premises." But several neighbors got this throughout Moses Carr and Heritage Drive, and I'm not sure about Rollins Road or Summersworth Road, and so, yes, they got it all. So, okay, I'll just quickly cover this. "A review of New Hampshire Environmental Services records indicates that the property you own may be served by a well located near an area that is potentially vulnerable to gasoline contamination. NHTS does not know whether or not well the gasoline components, such as methanol, sugary brew, which is MTBE, I can't say it, have impacted your well. Laboratory analysis of your drinking water is the only way to find out." And to summarize, they took a sample of my well, and this letter did not alarm me. I says, you know, it's probably, you know, talking about something airborne. Was I wrong? And I'll go into detail with the second letter. Well, the second letter came to me, and where the stars was, okay, I'm not gonna talk about everything, but this was an email sent to me by the same department, DES of New Hampshire, and it says, "No VOCs were detected." The next paragraph bothers me to the second. It says, "Although water quality in wells is generally stable," mine is not, okay, I'm not gonna talk about the details, but mine is not stable. "NSDAs recommends that individuals with private wells have their well water tested on a regular basis. We also recommend that testing is conducted on a more frequent basis in areas where, with land uses that handle hazardous chemicals." And the third one is a map, and I got this from the NHTS DES website, and on, if you hold it correctly, on, it shows Summersworth Road, and I was absolutely shocked to see a couple things here. And that is, Moses Carr is like a quarter mile away from cast towing and from the industrial section. Also, there's Warren Brook, it actually crosses the road, Summersworth Road, there's a culvert at Northern Truck, well, that carries the water down into Tremley Brook. So if there's...
Brook does use the junkyard.
Oh, okay. So we have a direct line of, you know, if there's an illicit discharge, which is highly illegal, if that happens, that is gonna carry the pollutants all the way down into Tremley Brook and into the aquifer of Moses Carr and Heritage Drive, and Rollins Road, and Summersworth Road, and even go down into Fresh Creek and into the Salmon Falls River. Now, what's also disturbing is, the state has test sites. The nearest place that they test the water is IO 6, which is Fresh Creek, which is three miles away. So, you know, the state is telling us, well, you test your water, and you tell us if there's a problem. Well, that's way, way too late. We'd be drinking contaminated water, or, you know, serving it to, you know, to our children, and no one is testing the water quality. Except, you know, it's being passed on to the homeowners. There is homeowners that have not tested their well water for thirty years until this time. And also, the test site, which is three miles away, I'm not even sure if the state tests for gasoline VOCs. And in fact, when you buy and sell a house, this is not a standard test. You don't have to test for VOCs, MTBE. So there's people buying houses now that their wells could be contaminated, and they don't, they don't even know about it. And you might say, well, you know, the homeowner's gonna know. I had parents that were serviced by a town well for over ten years, and they found out that their water was, you know, contaminated with gasoline also. So it's something if, and who tests for, you know, who tests their well, you know, well water quality and pays, like, three, four hundred dollars every six months to do it?
Thank you, Mr. Cassell, welcome. Other members of the public?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Pauline O'Neill. I live at 30 Old in Debo Hill Road, which is between the junkyard and the river, behind him, and towards Summersworth.
I'm so sorry, can you repeat your name?
Yes, Paul. Yes, Pauline O'Neill.
Okay, thank you.
I am here tonight as I received a notification of the Cassinelli auto salvage request for a variance on Summersworth Road. My property abuts mine, and my concern is a letter I received from the Department of Environmental Services stating that there has been a recent detection of methyl tertiary butyl ether, a component of gasoline, in a well located near my property. I do not know where this contaminated well is, but I feel that any increase in the salvage operations at the Cassinelli business could be a detriment to the wells in the area. So even though they think it has nothing to do with the business, it has everything to do with our water.
Thank you, Mr. Casell. Mr. Arkwell?
David Arkwell, 190 Summersworth Road, Rollins. There's a number of things that just weren't factual. Them trucks being in and out of there two or three times a night is just an absolute lie. I didn't bring my notes with me, but back along, I had set up a game camera at the end of my driveway at the shop next to the junkyard. And I can't remember now if it was 30 trips or 60 trips, in and out one night. And that's not unusual. I mean, there's times them trucks are in and out of there. Sometimes they're not gone three minutes, and they're back again. More often than not, they're coming in with nothing on them, no cars on them. And then at night, they use the junkyard as a, as kind of a play area for the drivers to get out there and hoop and holler and have a hell of a time while they're waiting for calls. So I mean, that's just an absolute lie. And another thing that really bothered me is the storage area. If you're standing in the street looking at his facility, to the left of his garage area, that was never there under Chickie Day. That was never there. He filled all that in and made that yard under that for the father towing business. Now, back in 2001, 2002, when he first took it over, we had quite a little ruckus right down here at Town Hall over the whole thing. And they assured us that he wasn't going to be able to expand his operation, that he was in the junkyard under a grandfather clause, and he could not expand the operation. Well, he has done nothing but expand that operation, and nobody in town wanted to get involved and take on the fight. But he has expanded it in every sense of the word. I'm trying to think of the whole... So anyway, he has expanded it. That area to the left of the garage should not even be there. He talked about that garage being the facility that he works on his trucks. You couldn't fit one of his trucks in that garage. They wouldn't fit through the door. So I mean, that's a lie. He was, back in '01, '02, he assured the selectmen that he was going to clean that place up and make it respectable, and he's done anything but the place is a bigger pigpen now than it ever was. I bought my property right next door to him in 1985. I lived next to Chickie for 16 years or so. Chickie worked full-time at Davidson Rubber, Monday through Friday, and the only time you ever even knew that junkyard was there was on Saturday mornings. And Chickie's idea of towing is he'd go up once a week, twice a week, whatever, grab a car, bring it into the yard. He never did any towing for AAA or anything even remotely close to that. Any towing he did was just to salvage cars coming in and out, or maybe he'd have a friend that needed a vehicle towed, and he'd go tow it. These guys have expanded that in every sense of the word. And the other thing to keep in mind through all this is those drivers in and out all hours of the night, their trucks have been involved in, trucks and drivers have been involved in drug deals on more than one occasion. They've been involved in, the drivers riding around town with BB guns, shooting out some poor person that's went to bed for the night, they're shooting out the windows in their cars in, you know, Dover, Summersworth, Burler, I've forgotten all the... And several hundred windows shot out by the clowns that he employs. So it's not as if we're dealing with stand-up people. These people are absolute bought from the barrel. They're the worst neighbors you could ever have. You give them an inch, he's going to take a mile. And that's basically what I've got to say, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Arkwell. Members of the public. Mr. Barrington, I'll offer you and Mr. Cassinelli an opportunity to rebut or to add any additional information to the record if you want. Same for Mr. Clark?
First of all, this is not a gas station. Whatever ground contamination may have happened, there's no indication whatsoever that it's linked to this business and has nothing to do with tow trucks.
That's wrong.
Are your tow trucks diesel or gas?
Diesel.
I don't think diesel even has MTBE, does it? So we're here about tow truck operation and diesel vehicles and all that and so on.
I guess I'm a little confused by that, Mr. Barrington, because the salvage yard, as I recall, one of the conditions of the junkyard license is that it requires very careful procedures for handling the fluids that are in the cars, the gasoline and the oil.
Now, this, we're not here to renew the junkyard permit. We're here to address tons of...
Okay, and again, I'm still confused. Your position is that each and every car coming into the impound lot, like there's never a car that leaks gasoline or oil, or that's impossible?
Yeah, it's possible, but I do have pans that they would put under any vehicle that they would seal on a tow truck.
One of the concerns, I think, and this is not going to be comforting to the members of the public, who I appreciate your taking the time to add to the record and share your concerns. This is an administrative appeal at this point, and we really are limited in the scope of what we can appropriately consider. The impacts on groundwater may be relevant if and when we reach the question of a variance, but it appears to me that our inquiry on the appeal is limited to whether or not we believe Mr. Clark read the ordinance correctly. But I guess in that regard, Mr. Barrington, I hope you'll be ready to address the butters' concerns, because in terms of, on a variance, dealing with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and dealing with the element of public safety, it seems like groundwater and the aquifer protection district overlay are squarely going to be an issue if we reach that piece of it. So I am concerned about that, but I do need to caution the public that on this appeal portion of it, groundwater may not be something that we can give much directly to. Okay, thank you for addressing that question, Mr. Barrington. Mr. Clark?
All set.
All set. Are there questions from the board before I close the public hearing?
I'm wondering if just the first question...
Any questions that you might want to... It's on the appeal. We're still on the appeal, and it's questions for Mr. Barrington, Mr. Cassinelli, Mr. Clark.
Good question.
Okay. And...
I'm okay.
You're okay?
I'm good.
Okay. And you've had a chance to wrap up, so I'll close, actually, I guess before I close the public hearing, I do want to give both Mr. Clark and Mr. Barrington, Mr. Cassinelli, if you want to weigh in. I've tried to keep careful notes of factual assertions, so that any findings of fact that the board makes are, we can be sure if it's either undisputed or if it's a fact that is asserted by either the applicant, the appellant, or the town. So here's what I have listed, and if there's anything in addition or any corrections that you think I need to make, let me know. And I apologize for how long this has already gotten. So there is a, the town ordinance does not currently permit open lot storage or sale of junk and salvage materials, and I believe that's undisputed? The current ordinance.
It does not permit open lot storage or sale of junk or salvage materials.
Agreed or...
Relevant.
Okay, believe it's not relevant, okay. But that the Day in Cass salvage yard was in existing non-conforming use at the time the ordinance was adopted? That is agreed?
Yes.
I'm not sure how we get one without the other, but that's fine. In 1992, '93, the town granted Mr. Day a motor vehicle junkyard license, and in 2003 granted Mr. Cassinelli a junkyard license. Motor vehicle junkyard license, agreed?
They have an annual junkyard licenses granted ever since it began, not just those two times.
So, and each year thereafter, until 2018?
In between, and I don't even know when the first one was. It was quite a while ago, because the Day started in 1959.
All right. And then I think we did review the conditions portion, and we agree that the conditions in the license exist. You disagree on the relevance of them, correct?
Yes. Well, they apply to one out of, two out of three, but not out of one.
And on December 17th, Mr. Clark, the town code enforcement officer, notified the applicant that the non-conforming auto salvage operation could remain subject to the motor vehicle junkyard license?
Yes, sir.
But on the same day, you notified the applicant that Cass Towing was not a permitted use and was not a permitted use.
Sure.
And again, the position of Mr. Cassinelli is that that's a fact, but it was an error to send that letter. Is that right, Mr. Barrington?
Yes.
And I guess, well, that's, the ordinance table of uses permits trucking terminals in the industrial zone, and this is a parcel in the industrial zone, and again, that's agreed by both parties? The ordinance does not define trucking terminal. Mr. Cassinelli asserts that any business that uses trucks as part of its operations would qualify as a trucking terminal if the trucks are parked on site. And I believe that Mr. Clark asserts that it's not a trucking terminal unless it involves the movement of freight.
Oh, and our position is that tow trucks move cars, which is equal to a freight.
And I'm trying to think if the number of trucks, I guess it is relevant, because I think that the board is going to have to determine if what has occurred is just a natural, a natural kind of gradual evolution of the business that was encompassed by the original non-conforming use, which the statute allows and the decisions of the Supreme Court also allow, or whether this is in fact a changed use, whether it has grown so much that is a substantially changed use. So for that purpose, I think there are currently five trucks currently used by Mr. Cassinelli?
Yes.
And previously, Mr. Day used one?
Yes.
And my notes indicate one or more tow trucks have historically been an accessory to the salvage yard use. Is that agreed?
Yes.
All right. And this is, I'm not sure that there is testimony on this point, so feel free to correct me if I'm wrong or if I'm incorrectly enlarging the record, but the tow trucks are currently parked at the front of the lot near the road outside the fence?
Yes.
Some sketch is part of the record.
Okay, thank you. And the towing company currently operates 24/7? I believe that's an agree upon fact.
I think it's contested whether they go in and out of the lot 24/7. I'm just conflicted testing on that.
I think we've already covered this one, but the business is located in the industrial zone in town, and there was quite a few people referred to that. And Mr. Cassinelli states that he talked to Ed Jansen in Alt Dione about tow trucks and towing services, and agreed that they wouldn't be in and out 24 hours a day. He currently works on police cars, AAA, GEICO, and also operates the salvage yard. Is that agreed?
Yes, but in addition, Mr. Jansen and Mr. Day are aware of the tow truck business. It's been openly advertised, it's on every truck, and this is not a hidden use. You could say it's been openly notorious.
There's conflicting testimony on the number of entries and departures, particularly at night. It's agreed that there are separate trade names for the salvage and the towing business?
Yes.
And I believe the testimony was one tax return for the salvage and the towing business?
Yes.
One tax return, each one consolidating.
No, that's on my, I don't get it.
Did it which part?
Same tax ID number.
Same tax ID number and one consolidated return. And also, the testimony was all employees are shared.
I'm sorry?
Employees are shared. They both work for junks and they work for towing.
And there's a total of five employees? Or did I get that number wrong?
Six.
And I believe, I believe this is undisputed. Mr. Barrington offered, and I think Mr. Cassinelli agrees, that there's a truck repair center next door that operates in the same zone?
Yes.
And there may be a disagreement about the relevance of that for the deciding whether or not Mr. Clark is in there. And we may have covered this, and I apologize, Mr. Barrington, but your position is that the trucks are dispatched, drop loads, and there's a safety area, and that's been going on for the whole time that Mr. Cassinelli has owned the property. Is that a disputed fact, or you believe it doesn't affect whether or not the board affirms or...
I don't think it's relevant to the decision, so...
And again, it was agreed that not the table of uses can't list every permissible use. It may be agreed that the applicant has to show how a use fits in with the ordinance. I know Mr. Clark offered that. Is there any disagreement on that point? And yeah, terminal is for loading and unloading freight. That's the disagreement about that term. Mr. Clark testified that there was a, or stated that DES brought to... to the town's attention a specific, specific set of circumstances at the junkyard, at the salvage yard, I apologize, and that it was during the investigation of those concerns that Mr. Clark learned about the scope of the towing business. Is that disputed?
No, that's what I come up. I mean, how long has Tom Clark been your coenforcement officer? He was full-time Dover, so I don't think he can be that long.
Yeah, he's been part-time to the town for 25 years.
I guess Mr. Clark hasn't said anything in 25 years until 2018.
Well, we'll have a chance to deliberate it, Mr. Barrington, but I, I'm not sure that the law requires Mr. Clark to go around 24 hours a day for all of those 25 years looking into people's property either. He, he has a job to do, and when his job brings in there and he discovers something, it's like when the police are called to a place and they discover a situation, they investigate the situation that they're presented with, and they're not stopped from doing their job because somebody had been running a drug business, say, in a, in a location for 25 years. When they, when they get to the scene, they're, they're authorized to respond, right?
And that's why the fact it's open and notorious as opposed to letting drug dealers are hiding, is trucking in part next to the main inlet and outlet of the, I'm sure Mr. Clark would agree that he's driven by here and seen tow trucks over the past 25 years.
Okay. So we'll, I'll be sure that however we treat that fact, that we note that, that there's a disagreement about whether the town, you know, the, the extent to which the town was on notice and to what extent the town had a legal duty, but it, but ultimately, the question for us is whether or not we think that Mr. Clark misread the stat, the, the ordinance.
And, and the town had given permission through its select, and through its annual junkyard review permit, which allowed any issue to be raised 17 years.
Okay. And I think it's agreed the impound lot takes about a quarter of the area?
I defer to Mr. Cassinelli.
And it sounds like there's disagreement about the extent to which other towing services operate in town and to the, the extent to which they operate 24/7.
He's asking, do you think the impound area is about 25% of the yard? Probably smaller than that.
Yeah, smaller than that. It was only like 40 feet by 40 feet, 40 by 60, something like that.
Are there any additional facts that you believe the board should have in mind as it's considering the appeal?
Incorporate our, please.
Mr. Clark?
I, I do have one. In light of Mr. Cassinelli's information that it's same tax ID on the state, Secretary of State website, there are two different business IDs.
It's a trade name. Every trade name has a different number, the tax is different. The business ID just goes with the LLC or the trade name. And one's a trade name, not an entity. Days Auto Salvage is a trade name.
All right. Members of the board, I hope I didn't belabor it too much, but I wanted to be sure that we have a clear record, because one of the things, if this goes up on appeal, the court is going to be looking for is clear findings of fact from our panel about what, what the evidence was that we received, so I wanted to take some care with that, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Are there any questions from the board for either party?
Well, I do have one, since this has just been risen. So with regard to the names, so Day's Auto Salvage is a trade name, so my reading of this is Cass Towing LLC, they are the primary company, and Day's Auto Salvage is, you're, you're indicating is the secondary company? They're the subordinate companies, you Cass Towing?
This application has to do with use of the land and not corporate tax issues. You don't have to apply use of the land. Use of the land, it's almost all a junkyard, except for where it's five trucks.
Right, but when he acquired the property, he acquired Day's Auto Salvage, correct, Mr. Barrington?
Correct.
Okay. So, and that was the business he acquired? Or was it just a trade name when he acquired it?
He acquired all the assets and the trade name.
Okay.
All the cars.
So since then, because in LLC, that's the actual company, the trade name is under Cass Towing. Am I incorrect in stating that?
Do you own the trade name or is it a last name?
I own it, it's, you have to, then you stick your name, so nobody else takes it. You know, like, you gotta go to the Secretary of State.
The tax is a name. Your duty is to look at the uses of the land, and look at the size and impact upon the land by by contrast.
But we're also trying to determine if it's two separate companies?
It's not, it's one company as you're using that term.
Okay, and the company is Cass Towing LLC?
That's the name of it.
Okay.
Also doing businesses, Day's Auto Salvage.
Okay.
Yes, I do have one question for Mr. Clark and Mr. Mr. Barrington, and I, it seems to me that the common theme in the butter testimony was that, that the, the use that Mr. Cassinelli is making of the parcel today is quite a bit different, substantially different, than, than the use that Mr. Day made. And if the board finds that testimony credible, is there any reason we can't consider it?
No, that's clearly within number three, page three of my presentation, I have a Supreme Court, I have the grandfathered use and expansion, parts of material expansion.
Really? Okay, all right.
That's how to say it.
But again, it's the impact upon the land, it's not what he does all around town.
And then Mr. Day had way more cars than I do now. He used to stack them four, five high, and he would wait until the price of metal went up, and then he would cash them all in. So he had like three, I'm not allowed to stack cars, and then he had like thousands of tires just thrown into the woods, and I'd pull them out of the wetlands, and then I had to get rid of them all. I had to clean up, that's why he sold the places, because he was getting in trouble with the tires and the wetlands and the pollution. And he's the guy who dumped all that dirt there. And Mr. I, he claimed that I put into the wetlands, but it was that day that it had all, when the, the town built that new bridge by the fire station in town, that's where they were dumping all the dirt, was in front of Day's Auto Salvage.
But you're the one that had it bulldozed into the, into the wetland. Absolutely, you did, after the junkyard hearings. Hundred percent certain.
Yeah, it was one of the guys from town that, that had a bulldozer, and he cleaned up the front of it.
So there's a disputed fact on?
And then, as far as all the police, the police calls that, you said the chief had, the first four or five police calls were from Mr. Harkwell, when he sucker punched my son in the face, and then called the police, and he got arrested, Mr. Harkwell did, and then ever since then, he's had a vendetta against us.
I think we'll bring the public hearing to a close, and we'll be in deliberation on the appeal and the request that we, there can be a motion to affirm, to deny, or to modify Mr. Clark's, Mr. Clark's cease and desist. And we are in deliberations, and one of the joys, one of the things that they didn't tell us before they let us be on the ZBA was that we have to deliberate in public, so here we go. Sunny?
I'd like to offer a change. I clearly see these are two separate entities. I don't know how you fully see it. As far as the junkyard, leave that sit, let their license get taken care of, and most of these issues, because I live in that same area, and I know exactly what they're talking about with the water test. You probably got one too? Let that stay at that issue. This issue is about Cass Towing. Cass Towing, in my opinion, is a separate total entity than Day's Junkyard. I think that they should go to the planning board and get site plan reviewed, but I think the town should be lenient, because he's been operating it for a while. I'm not saying give him a free rein, but modify your cease and desus, desist order so that it's not a, you know, an immediate impact. I mean, fair is fair. Then, when the selectmen are ready to hold a, a public meeting on the licensing, all you, myself can come in and we can speak our piece as far as water's concerned. That's how I feel. That make sense?
We'll get to the other members of the panel. Other comments or?
I don't think, okay. I don't think that we're talking about water concerns right now. We're talking about a business that started as a junkyard, that was given permission to operate from eight to five, Monday through Saturday, that has now morphed into a huge towing business, according to the neighbors, and if I were living next door, I would not be happy with that either. If you want to tow the vehicles between eight and five, that's one thing, but if you're towing them after hours, and in your testimony, you said that you had one driver that took a truck home at night, you called him at his residence, and he took off from there. That's contrary to the testimony that we heard from the people here, that you have people there, four or five trucks leaving that, your facility, facility all hours of the night. So I don't, I mean, I, we can address the water issue at another time, but I don't think that we need to make any, you know, to vote on that at all right now.
Okay, and just so that the rest of the panel can understand, is your recommendation that we affirm?
Yes.
Reverse or modify Mr. Clark's order?
Affirm Mr. Clark's.
I would agree. Yes, Deanna. Sunny, I respectfully don't agree with your opinion. I, I do believe that it is a substantially expanded use from just the junkyard.
See, you do agree.
I, I would affirm Mr. Clark's letter, cease and desist letter. I, I do think that it is, it has, yeah, it, it has expanded substantially, so that's my decision.
Ms. Ginsman?
I'm a little bit, so how I perceive the sort of course of tonight is the, maybe I'm mistaken about it, is we're first going to make a decision as to the appeal of an administrative decision on the sole issue of whether or not Cass towing is a permitted use, then if that, the administrative official's decision is upheld, we would, then it's, I'm a little bit confused as to whether we, Attorney Barrington will make a presentation on the variance, or if then we would immediately go into a deliberation on the variance issue.
We have not taken testimony on the variance issue, so.
All right.
Both Mr. Clark and Mr. Barrington would have an opportunity to offer, and, and members of the public also would have an opportunity to offer additional testimony, comment, and evidence on the variance issue.
All right, so having understood that, and although Attorney Barrington will have a fine presentation tonight, I would, it's my belief that, given the chairman's helpful recitation, and I think this is not challenged, that the general standard is something akin to, we would defer to a, the judgment of the official, if the official is make, is applying a reasonable definition to the use in question, and I think that, again, with all due respect, that the official's determination that this is not a, a truck terminal is a reasonable definition, and I would uphold his decision.
I think based on what I've heard so far, and Sunny, you're welcome to chime in, but I think what I've heard so far suggests that a motion would be offered to affirm the, the cease, the, to affirm the determination of Mr. Clark in the cease and desist letter without any modification, because the next part would be the variance question about whether or not this could go to site plan review, or I, I have a procedural, like Mr. Ginsman, I have a procedural question, but, but we would treat the question of whether it could go to the planning board as a separate issue for site plan review.
Okay.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that the board uphold and affirm the decision of Tom Clark, the administrative decision in regard to Cass towing.
Letter, so I'm going to read it back of 1217. So your motion would be that the ZBA affirmed the decision of Tom Clark in his letter of December 17th to cease and desist the towing use?
Yes, that is much more well-articulated than my, what I suggested. Thank you.
No, I've had the chance to, to benefit from everybody's commentary. Is there a second?
I see.
There's a second? And is there discussion on the motion to affirm Mr. Clark's letter?
That's a, that's an immediate shutdown, correct? Or are we going to go into this in the next portion?
Then we would go into, so we make a decision on this motion. If the motion passes, then Attorney Barrington and Tom Clark would have the ability to make an argument regarding the variance.
Perfect.
Okay. We ready for a vote? Those in favor of the motion to affirm the decision of Tom Clark, or the town coenforcement officer, make a question. Indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And I find that the motion carries. So, Mr. Barrington, it is quarter of nine, and I think we're here, and we've noticed up the, the hearing on the, the variance application, so we can move into a hearing on the request for a variance. And I have a procedural question first. Is there any reason where, where you have agreed that site plan review is applicable? Is, is action of this board required for you to go and seek site plan approval for the towing use?
You have to have the use allowed by use before you go to the planning boards. Universally understood that one becomes the other. And your last ruling ignores the fact there's always been a tow truck there, and now you're saying 100% of tow truck operations have to cease? And the uncontroverted evidence is there was always a loose bump to tow truck there? And that's an arbitrary and capricious decision.
Okay. So you, you're, I'm trying to understand your request. You want to go into a hearing on variance? Then let's do that.
First, I think we can all agree that all testimony handles, they submitted and incorporated our references to this proceeding. So the variance requested is to allow a dispatch and storage of towing vehicles to the extent that it's not a trucking terminal. And that's it. It's a very slight variance. On the granting of variance is not contrary to public interest, because under the existing table of uses, this use is already allows frequent traffic of trucks. You have to look upon the impact upon the property. It's already an industrial zone, so we're not talking about home occupations. We've allowed trucking terminals, and the board has ruled that freight is freight and car is car, but it's still, what would be allowed, the public interest, is what the zoning ordinance talked about, and having five tow trucks parked and coming and going is no different from any other truck traffic to any other industrial use, any factory, any large truck tow repair, any manufacturing. There's not any more truck traffic than would be at any of those uses in this industrial zone. It's not against the public interest, because the public interest has made this an industrial zone from day one, and people moved in and have a house next door, like Mr. RQ, and he came in knowing that he was buying a house in industrial. and he came in knowing that he was buying a house in an industrial district, and maybe someday he'd like to sell this house and the houses next door, and they'll turn it into manufacturing. This is where Rollins would put their industrial zone. Two, the variance would be granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. So first, the public interest is to allow trucks and trucking to further industrial use. The spirit of the ordinance is absorbed for similar reasons. If the spirit of the ordinance is to allow trucking and industrial use, it would allow a trucking terminal. So imagine an Amazon substation or a Walmart substation with trucks coming in day and night, bringing in freight, taking out freight. Is that use any different than the five tow trucks that are there instead of one tow truck that is there? The spirit of the ordinance was to make an industrial zone that would have trucking. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Substantial justice is defined as a fundamental fairness. Daze Junkyard has operated with at least one tow truck, integral and part of that use since the 1950s. We sold it to Mr. O'Day. He was told by the selector that he could continue doing his towing operation. The towing operation has been in continuous use. And although he has five trucks, he says that he has three drivers at a time, so we're only talking about three trucks moving at a time. And for the most part, 99% of what they do is done off-site. So substantial justice would be to follow selectman Deontes and Jensen's and apparently Tom Clark's opinion that having some tow trucks at a junkyard is not against substantial justice. It's justice, fair. Four, the variance would be granted, it would not surround the value of the surrounding properties, because the surrounding properties are all in an industrial district. Your butler's a large truck repair, so he has big trucks coming in and out on a regular basis. His trucks and the trailers are even bigger than the tow trucks. The... Whether it's one tow truck or three tow trucks coming in and out but being parked there does not diminish the surrounding values. You heard that he has 50, there's been up to 100 cars parked there. So when you look at five tow trucks being parked next to 100 junk cars being parked, that's an insignificant percentage. A no necessary hardship, and a little "aye", no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision. There's no substantial relationship for the purpose of allowing an industrial district, trucking terminals, manufacturing terminals, manufacturing businesses, all to have things coming in and out all the time. And yet somehow a tow truck, because it's towing, it's a car and it's freight instead of other freight, isn't allowed. Clearly, I would allow five tow trucks to operate in an industrial zone, when industry is typically associated with trucking. There's no substantial relationship between the purpose of not including a trucking terminal for tow trucks and a trucking terminal for freight. This is your ordinance. When he bought this property, he had the right to rely upon your ordinance. He wanted to an industrial district. He went into an area that allowed trucking terminals. He asked the selector, and he got permission. He's parked the trucks next to the car, and the blind man would have to see and feel and know that tow trucks had been there. Number five, number two, the proposed use is reasonable, because five tow trucks in comparison to any other industrial use is insignificant. You have to compare it to what you allow in the district, and why can't you allow this too? Number B, I'm not... I don't... This is a case where the D doesn't really apply. We're just going under A. That's a question.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Questions for Mr. Barrington?
Mr. Barrington, is this the... In our consideration of your variance, request for a variance, is the issue of the incidentally used part of this decision tonight on this particular request? Or is that... In other words, is this...
There's no bearing upon the...
Okay, so in other words, so this is the last decision we've made tonight in regard to your client?
Well, I'm just looking for clarification. So the variance request states that you are requesting a variance from Section 5.2 of the zoning ordinance? Nonconform use, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And on the table of uses 6.2, which is supposed to be a point instead of a dash.
And just to confirm, Ms. O'Neill testified that her property was... Thinking in relationship to Mr. Daze's property, it's closer to the river than it is to the road, that I think is Crockett's Crossing Road. Is that also in the industrial zone, Mr. Barrington?
I don't think the industrial zone goes back to Crockett's property. I don't think it goes back into what we call scouting.
Okay. And one of the questions... And the other question I had is, if the variance is approved, then it would go to site plan review? And so questions of where the trucks would be stored and putting cans under cars and so forth, that would be taken up in that process, correct?
We are not disputing the part of the coenforcement's decision that the towing isn't used and hasn't gone through site plan. So once it approved, it'd go through site plan.
Other questions? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really have no objection to the request for the variance. That was, I believe, the whole purpose, to have it established as a separate use and to proceed through the proper land use procedure and to have it approved by the zoning board and then go on to site review so that the conditions of the site can be followed by the planning board. So I have no objection to the application.
Okay.
I have a question.
I just want to make sure that Mr. Clark has had a chance to finish.
Yes, I have. Thank you.
I just want a clarification. If we allow this variance tonight, both of us, will that mean that Mr. Daze or the Daze salvage part would go back to the way it was in his initial request for that permit? Or are we extending it so that he can continue cast towing as he is operating now?
Right now, the decision... If you do grant the appeal, you are stating that the towing operation isn't allowed use, but would have to go to the planning board for site review. According to the State Supreme Court, totally under your concern, if we issue a cease and desist and the applicant or owner appeals a decision, the cease and desist is stayed until such time as the final decision is made. So with you folks deciding, and then with the delay between the zoning board and the planning board, Mr. Casinelli could still operate both businesses, as he has been. Once it gets to the planning board, then they establish a site review approval and can impose any reasonable conditions that they need. But he will be able to continue to operate in the meantime.
Other questions for Mr. Clark? And I should have... I'll give Mr. Barrington a chance to respond. As I reviewed Mr. Barrington's submissions and thought about the Aquifer Protection District overlay, most of the town seems to be subject to that. But as I listen to Mr. Barrington tonight, it sounds as if the concerns about the overlay district really relate to the salvage yard and not to the towing part, because as long as the towing part is adequately regulated in site plan review, then the impacts on the Aquifer District should be minimized. Does that sound like it's an accurate...
Yes, sir. Yes, it does.
Exactly.
Okay.
And the refusal doesn't matter, it'd be to you.
Yeah, I think it's more the cars coming in and out that are stored on the land that...
That's part of your doctrine, right?
Yeah, I think that's part of the... Although you're increasing the dens... Although Mr. Casinelli's testimony was that the density is actually lower than it was with Mr. Daze, so...
It is, the much less cars. And inbound cars are function, too.
So I've been at a number of stoplights with interesting stuff on the road pavement. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Clark?
Just a clarification question, please, Mr. Chairman. Me again, Tom. All right. So if this appeal is granted and it goes to the planning board...
You go fair. You said you have the...
The variance... I need to put a correction in, Mr. Chairman. At that point is when they could put in all the stipulations, correct?
They could put in the stipulations as a relation to the site plan review for cast towing.
Right. So one of the ways could be limitation on, we'll say, noise level after certain hours, or limits of operation, or amount of vehicles.
Yes.
All of that would come then.
The planning... Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. So my understanding is that the Daze auto salvage, the salvage yard permit is still in the bill. It has not been continued.
That's correct. That, subject to the rest of this, will be the next step, that Mrs. Casinelli will go to the select board to have that reviewed and approved or modified.
Or modified.
So that also is still required.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
One last procedural question, Tom, Mr. Clark. So if we approve the variance pending the site plan review by the planning board, what is the status of how cast towing can be operated in the meantime?
He can continue to operate as he has been.
Okay. Thank you.
Seth?
Thank you.
All right. Members of the public, thank you for hanging into a long hearing. It's an opportunity for public input and comment on the request for a variance. So they... Mr. Casinelli has asked the planning board to approve a request to find that it would be permitted under our zoning ordinance for him to have a towing business, subject to the activities of the planning board, to administer what we call site plan review, which takes up the details of how a business use is undertaken. So any additional testimony that members of the public would like to offer or any comment is welcome. Mr. Casel, if you would restate your name again?
Yes. Third is drive. And, okay, I feel that the towing business is connected to the salvage yard, because the towing business will be legally expanded from one to five trucks with a full-time mechanic to service the trucks on site. The expansion of the tow truck business will naturally expand for the salvage business. And therefore, both businesses will expand land uses that handle hazardous materials and pose a use risk to the public safety by possibly contaminating the water quality of the Warren Brook and the Fresh People Watershed. That's, you know, that's a major concern that I have. There's some upsetting things that concern me. And I don't think it's acceptable to put pans beneath leaking vehicles, which is stored on a gravel parking lot next to wetlands and a watershed, to contain hazardous waste. You know? And I have a copy of requirements for the junkyard, and the same should apply to the towing business. Excuse me, I did have an inferring, I think it's on a back page. This is the motor vehicle junkyard license on 2003. Well, first thing it says in 2003 is tires should be stored in appropriate, you know, containers and undercover. And the owner has done that, and I commend him. But on number 12, it says, "All fluids shall be immediately removed from junk vehicles and shall be stored on site in appropriate containers, which are in compliance with best management practices for auto salvage yards." I don't think that when you pick up a vehicle and it's pouring outside and you put it on a gravel parking lot, and you have a pan, and you just, you know, leave it there overnight, that that's a best management practice. I think that if the EPA saw this, they would be really upset. And the consequences is to the neighborhood. We will get contaminated water at some point in time. It could be next year, it could be in 10 years. You can't see contaminated water, and it's very difficult and expensive to test for all the contaminants.
Mr. Argu?
I would concur with that observation. It's the... When a vehicle's been involved...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if I could get you to restate your name, even though I recognize my name, so that Sarah can get a good...
I'm sorry, my memory is not...
That's right. Jim Argu, from 144 Summersworth Road. The vehicles that are involved in accidents and brought into the tow yard are left out in the tow yard. And that's not a good management practice to leave... You know, if you got in a head-on collision, your car's leaking. And it doesn't belong in a muddy lot.
Anything else?
I just... I think that needs to be part of... If you pass this variance, there needs to be some stipulations on how they are controlling runoff from the vehicles.
Thank you. Comment or testimony?
David Arkwell, 190 Summersworth Road. I guess I'm questioning the acreage of the lot is, as I recall it, somewhere around seven acres. And there's a good portion of that that's already in wetlands. If you're saying that the towing business isn't part of the junkyard business, then shouldn't that lot have to... Shouldn't it be a conforming lot to put a trucking terminal, or whatever you care to call it, on that? And doesn't one... Could you have a junkyard and a truck terminal? And can you have three different businesses on one non-conforming lot?
Part of me wants to... I think in order to keep our hearing on track, Mr. Arkwell, I'll be glad to talk with you afterwards about how I understand and remember the site plan review working. In order to keep the proceeding orderly, I probably shouldn't answer your question from here, but I do appreciate your question. And I'm sure Mr. Clark or Mr. Hinsman or I would be glad to talk with you about it. Thank you. And you... Did I cut you off?
No, no, that was it.
No, no, that was it.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question, just for clarification. Mr. Argu, I believe it was his name, indicated that we should put conditions on the variance. Is that a lawful?
Not really, no. The site plan review process really is the check. It's where the town gets to address some of the concerns that have been made tonight, particularly by Abutters, but also by Mr. Clark, about the scope of the use and the way in which the use is operated on that site.
I'm just concerned because I'm going back to like the junkyard operation or the salvage yard operation, and that clearly stated what the permit was. It was eight to five, Monday through Saturday. And if we give this variance, and we're saying that what he has been doing now, that we're saying contrary to the permit that he had originally, we're approving him to continue his business as usual and not...
True, for now. However, it's my opinion that the planning board could certainly expand the condition of the salvage operation to the towing operation, so that it shall choose.
Mr. Barrington, did you also want to address Ms. Bravo's question?
I agree that this is a...this is to just say in theory that the dispatch and storage of towing vehicle is granted a variance because it causes substantial injustice to allow all these other uses that are more intense than that. So once you have a use established, the planning board establishes the seating, the hours of operation, all the things that affect the public, and they will.
That's...they do good work. All right. Other questions from the board? And Ms. Cass?
I have just a couple. So are we certain that the planning board can establish conditions as far as hours of operation?
I would...yes, absolutely.
We are sure, okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Barrington and then Mr. Clark, any final comments that you want to make?
No.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, then I will close the public hearing, and we will be in deliberations on the request for a variance from sections 5.2 and 6.2 of the table of uses.
Mr. Chairman, is it...could you keep that up for a second? Is it your preference that we deliberate on the individual elements individually or as a whole?
As a whole, my preference. We won't take a vote on each and every element, but I do want the board to consider all five elements very carefully. The reason that we won't vote element by element is that it can lead to an erroneous result, in my view, if some of us agree that one element is met, and some of us don't agree that that element is met. We really need to treat it as a whole, but we do need to deliberate in our...both our findings and our decision have to address all five elements.
I'll go ahead and speak first. So in my overall analysis here, you know, it seems to me that, in terms of weighing some of these factors, that, you know, the argument is, along the way, that cast towing is...and I know this isn't properly the issue before the board, incidental that day's auto salvage...I really think that the principal business has become cast towing, and day's auto salvage has become a vestige of it. It sort of reminds me of...I wrote down some examples here. Amazon starting off selling books, and really now is an online marketplace, and a streaming service that really has nothing to do with books. Verizon used to have landlines, and now it's become wireless. According to the applicant, you know, day's used to have far more cars, stacked cars than only one tow truck, and now it's five tow trucks and much less cars. And I say that because to me, that weighs on the elements of the hardship and the values of the surrounding properties. I think that if the variance was granted, the value of the surrounding properties would be diminished because of the amount of traffic in and out, regardless of whether or not...I don't think we can...I don't think in making this decision, we can speculate as to what the planning board will do. And so knowing that that's an unknown, I don't feel that it meets element four. And in terms of the unnecessary hardship, with all due respect to the applicant, I think he has pushed the envelope so far in terms of what the business was and what it really is now, that I'm not sure that he can claim unnecessary hardship. So I'm inclined to vote against granting a variance.
Other comments on the board? Mr. Boss?
My comment, you'd be able to agree. John, I think that you have great points, and I would be in favor of not granting the variance.
I have any comments and concerns?
Okay, I'll take a turn. I guess I do tend to be persuaded by the argument that this is an industrial zone, and that there are many uses permitted in the industrial zone, and relatively few uses that are prohibited in the industrial zone. As far as the spirit of the ordinance, it seems to me that the request for the variance is consistent with the spirit in the sense that...so granting Mr. Hinsman's point that, yeah, the business has evolved, but as I understand the underlying moving force of the New Hampshire zoning laws, it's to allow the landowner, things change. This isn't the world that Mr. Day existed in in 1950, when he started the salvage lot, and the spirit of the ordinance is supposed to keep up in a way that allows Mr. Casinelli to use the land in accordance with what other landowners in the district could do. So I think I find that the second element is met. I am troubled...I'm troubled by the estoppel argument. I confess to some occupational bias, I'm a former prosecutor, but I'm bordering unoffended by the idea that if somebody just gets away with violating the ordinance long enough, then the town can take no action on it. On the other hand, it seems to do substantial justice because the concerns about Abutters and the concerns of landowners in terms of impacts on water, noise, hours of operation, the zoning ordinance is set up to manage that, and we have a good planning board that can work through site plan review with this landowner. And so from that standpoint, it seems like the substantial justice that occurs is that we get a non-conforming and increasingly non-conforming use back onto the tracks and bring it into the scope of the ordinance. So I think I would find on three that it is met. On the values of surrounding properties, again, I credit the applicant's argument that in some respects, there are now fewer cars, and the number of trucks isn't specifically the...isn't the same kind of harm that we were concerned about with expand, you know, increasing expansion of a salvage yard. I am, however, mindful, I think that the Abutter testimony about impacts on surface water, it really...it's a close one, because if people's wells or if surface water is contaminated, and I think what none of...there was really no testimony, and none of us are the kind of scientists that can make the connection. We don't know that any of the impacts on aquifers are, you know, a result of Mr. Casinelli's operation. It could be something miles and miles away. So although I'm concerned about the values of surrounding property, I think on balance, I would find that the applicant has met his burden. And the burden is on Mr. Casinelli on all five, on all five elements, as I understand it. Hardship is where I struggle a little bit, because it just doesn't feel like a variance to me. It feels almost like advisory opinion about what's included or not in the zoning ordinance. But I think in this instance, I would find that it does meet the test for unnecessary hardship, because what's unique about this property is that it's an existing non-conforming use, and it's been there so long, and it's been...this is not to throw...I don't...I know Mr. Jansen and Mr. Dione, I respect the heck out of them, and I respect Mr. Clark, and you've heard what I think about the argument on estoppel. But it's not Mr. Casinelli's fault that the world has changed, and it's not his fault that the technologies have changed and the requirements for earning his living have changed. He happens to own a parcel that...he went into that parcel and is doing that business because it was there as a permitted non-conforming use, and it has evolved. And it does seem to me that it would be an unnecessary hardship to that, not so much to Mr. Casinelli, but to that land, to say, okay, we can't bring it...the only thing that can happen there is this non-conforming salvage yard, and we can't bring it within the scope of the ordinance. So I guess I would, on balance, I would vote in favor of granting the petition, and I believe it's justifiable on all five elements. And that's, you know, I...one thing I will say, we can discuss if the board chooses to reject the petition, I'm happy to draft the order for the board, but I'm also happy to defer to Mr. Hinsman, because he also can draft orders for the boards. But I'll do my job as chair if you want me to, but that's where I would land personally.
That's fine. I would like to have some discussion regarding the non-conforming use. So this is what I'm struggling with, and, you know, I think we've determined, so it is a non-conforming use that has existed for a number of years, but the ordinance is very clear that the non-conforming use may continue indefinitely, but no such lawfully non-conforming use shall be extended or enlarged in any manner. And, I mean, that's...
The...I can't give legal advice to the board. I did read a number of the cases and the guidance from the Office of State. It's no longer Office of State Planning, it's OSI, I forget what that stands for. And our Supreme Court has granted quite a number of expans...
Expansions.
Yeah, it's substantial change to the use, and I was on the...I disagree with Mr. Barrington about the board's previous action being arbitrary and capricious, because I think it was highly reasonable that this particular use had evolved so much that it was substantially different, and therefore I was comfortable finding that Mr. Clark's order was the correct order.
It's almost flipped.
Yeah, but, no, and expansion of non-conforming use isn't directly relevant to the question of whether or not we grant the variance, at least as I understand it. And, Dan?
Yeah. My issue that I have is, I believe it was...he's had it for 17 years, and for 17 years or whatever the timeframe was, he's applied to the town for a permit for his salvage yard. And in that permit, when it's granted by the town, it has specific criteria in there. You walk rate between eight and five, Monday through Saturday. He knew that when he was going his towing business, that he was going beyond that scope. So over the years, when he was adding these additional trucks and doing additional work and going to AAA and all of that, he had the opportunity to come to the town and apply for a permit to do that business. I have a problem now with sitting here today, 17 years later, giving him a break on this when he was not proacting himself in getting that, putting that request forward to the town. Sorry. No.
My word of the board.
Mr. Boss?
Yeah. I'm going to put a little add-on to what you said, Mr. Chairman. Trucking terminal is allowed in that zone. Any judge is going to rule, overrule us that where it states right there, it is allowed. I mean, it's in the book. Now the question is, what's the definition of a trucking terminal? Now, I'm not prepared to battle that one. I don't think you are, Tom. It's probably going to fall under some real vague definition. I think this is our opportunity to grab this bull by the horns and put our controls on it. If he goes before the planning board, and if they do diligence there, a lot of these issues are going to disappear. I mean, your storage of impounded vehicles is on a gravel lot. I mean, they could go and say, you know, we're going to require a concrete pad to contain any fluids. You know, when you put them on asphalt, gasoline's going to go right through asphalt. That's just one thing. As far as the water, that's strictly junkyard license issue. However, if you've got a storeyard vehicle, and couldn't agree more, it is definitely leaking coolant. Unless you've got a rear engine, and most of the rays are still in front. The trucks, they may be leaking a little. Actually, according to the requirements of the state motor vehicle inspection, if a vehicle's leaking, as long as it doesn't leak and the leak touches the ground, you can pass the vehicle. But if it leaks to the ground, different story. So I think this is an opportunity for the town to take this whole situation and control and put some...everybody back there, every one of us have all got the same issues. When I got the notice from the state, it listed North Coast Railroad, it listed day's junkyard on their paperwork from the state, when they came down to test my role. So, I live on Rollins Road, not that far from you folks, so...
And, Dan, I respect your point about, you know, the town hopes that all of us, when we go before a town board or a town official, will be honest and forthcoming, but the same way that I don't think that we should be blaming the previous towns for not discovering this, I'm not sure that we need...what the planning board has to consider is whether this parcel meets the requirements for the variance. It's not a...we can't really make a character judgment about Mr. Casinelli or how he chooses to deal with town officials. And there may be two sides to the story that we haven't heard, because it's not directly relevant to what we have to do as a land use regulatory...
It's almost too far to move the case.
At least that's my initial sense of it. It's not to...I understand your point and I respect it, because I've been in that position where the work of the people like Mr. Clark, the select board, the planning board do really depends on our integrity and honesty as we deal with them. But, you know, be that as it may, I think, as Sonny says, it's a new day and it's a chance for all of us to kind of hold each other accountable.
I know it's not required. Can I just, just one point?
You may.
Right now, you have a grandfather junkyard that nobody likes. Mr. Casinelli is also operating a towing business, but he's not allowed to have a towing business there, according to you, because it's not the same as a truck terminal. By granting him a variance, to say that a towing operation would be industrial use permitted, and then going to the planning board, then the planning board will be in position... Right now he has two businesses, junk and towing, and your zoning ordinance allows industrial, but apparently not tow trucks according to a rule. It's not to have a legal use and then go to the planning board.
All right. I sense a, a split in the board. One of the ways, we can go around again to see if any of our positions have changed or we can go forward with a motion to grant or deny and take a vote. What's the board's pleasure?
Could I deliberate a little more, Charlie, and...
We can deliberate...
Well, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go much further on this. So, I'm swayed to the edge with your, with your comments, Mr. Chairman, on this thing. It's the, I guess what essentially bothers me is that the applicant bought Day's auto salvage, not Day's towing service. And it seems as akin to buying a, a little corner grocery store and it becomes a wholesale vegetable distribution issue and, and, you know, if we deny the variance, he can still operate the, the junkyard. And it seems to me under the previous incarnation of the junkyard, he could have a tow truck, maybe two, but he'd have to operate during the business hours. I, you know, I'm, I'm absolutely on the fence on this one and, but I appreciate your, your comments, so I remain undecided and then may actually end up deciding as we, as we vote. But I guess to get to your comments, so if I could...
Can you name a, one of the five prongs that that comes back to?
Sure. So, so I'm gonna come back to the Ms. Cass' point about a nonconforming use and expanding a nonconforming use in terms of variance. This seems to be a wholesale expansion of a, of a nonconforming use. We are basically saying, you can take one business that's nonconforming and completely transfer it into, and completely another business and seek a variance. And tell me that I'm wrong on that.
Well, I think on the zone, on the variance analysis, you're wrong, Mr. Hensman, because, so, Mr. Casonelli decides to retire and move to Florida and he sells the property to somebody who wants to close the salvage yard, close the towing business and open a greenhouse. They can do it. Like, there's no, there's no legal obligation to, on Mr., on the owner of the parcel to maintain a nonconforming use. And as I understand, the, the public interest prong, the public interest is to try to, as much as we can, direct the uses of the land, you know, kind of give them a nudge in the direction of greater compliance with the, with the ordinance. And so, yes, the, the business has evolved. My understanding, and again, I'm not offering legal advice here, but my understanding of the cases was that that kind of evolution is allowed and isn't, is, again, it's, I don't wanna mix and match expansion of nonconforming uses and variances, but it seems to me that that's why public interest, spirit and substantial justice come down the side of granting a variance.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clark?
If I may, I think if the board grants the variance, you're not permitting the expansion of a nonconforming use, you're creating the operation of a conforming use by stating that the towing service is a conforming use in that zone. So it's not, in my opinion anyway, an expansion of a nonconforming use since you're establishing a whole new conforming use.
All right. Thank you.
So I guess my question for other members of the board, are we, are we accepting that this is defined as a truck terminal, that it would fall within that scope?
We've already decided, I think we know on that. We are now deciding whether or not to allow, to grant a variance for this particular use. Am I wrong, Chairman?
We haven't ordered a motion yet, but I think it's, it's to grant a variance from the provisions of 5.2 and 6.2.
But 5.2 is nonconforming use.
Okay.
Okay.
So, to, to grant a variance from the express language of the table of uses to permit the establishment of a towing, a towing business in the industrial zone.
Okay. And Mr. Barrington is reporting that this towing business is defined under truck terminal?
No, I don't think so now.
Because if it was, then he, he wouldn't have to go for a variance.
Right, it would be, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Boss?
In your comment, if you knocked him down the tube, right, with no controls, if we say yes to this, we should have the ability to put all of the controls we feel would be necessary for environmental protection and whatnot. And that would be the golden diamond for the neighbors to say, hey.
Yes, okay, all right. You agree with me? I do, actually.
Wow!
Sweet piece.
One for me.
I give the Charles some credit on that too.
Again, I don't, I wanna give this as much time as the board needs to, to deliberate. This is, I mean, all of the decisions we make are important, this one is, is important.
I'm not convinced that a variance is, is to be granted.
Make a motion for a vote?
We can make a motion and, and see if the motion, let me, let me try and...
I hope we make a motion and then vote, just a second.
I don't make a motion, not so much.
Oh, okay.
I make the motion to not grant a variance.
A motion by Ms. Rallo to deny the variance and is there a second?
I stand alone.
So, there is no second for that, so let's have a, try a motion to grant the variance.
I'll make a motion.
I will reluctantly second it, having been persuaded by my fellow board members that it's the appropriate thing to do.
Is there discussion on that motion? Are we ready for a vote? Those in favor of granting the requested variance to permit the establishment of a towing business in the industrial zone indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
And I find that the motion carries for a one. It remains on us to provide, to come up with written decisions for motions or for both applications and I'll try to get drafts developed on the, the drafting obligation, try to draft for the, we under a timeframe that we have to get those done?
Seven days.
Seven days. So by Sunday night.
It's tough.
Yeah, it's tough with a day job, too.
And then also it'll be, it's gonna be going to site.
This will be going to site and there will be another opportunity for the public input before the planning board. So, there may be, and I'm sorry to create an additional...
Do you want to close any?
I do. Is there any business, other, further business to come before the planning board, uh, the zoning board, excuse me? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second?
So we have a motion to adjourn, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you all very much, thinking members of the public... Mr. Barrington, I appreciate it, thank you.